All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this, our August 25th, 2025 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are here, as always, at
Recording in progress.
We're here, as always, at the beautiful Ballada Meeting Room in Town Hall. If you are watching us at home and want to join in the meeting, you can either use the link on the agenda, you can find that agenda on the town website, to join the Zoom and join through there. You could also come on down here. Now, Zoom link, also, you can call in with a phone as well, and there's instructions for that. This meeting is being recorded, and yeah, I believe that's everything we need. So, thank you for joining us tonight, and we will open with public comment. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to Chair's Report. Let me call up those notes for y'all. Give me one second. I wanted to open the meeting tonight with the first thing kind of coming from us besides the usual requirements. You don't see Matt Allison up here tonight. Matt Allison has chosen to step back from the planning board. He has given, to my understanding, Matt, I apologize if I get the number wrong, but 11 years of service on the planning board. And he's had to take, now step back and away from the board, but that's over a decade of service to the town, just in that capacity. And planning, as people often tell me, is some of the more dry work the town does. It's not always exciting. It's not always fun. It is always important. So, Matt, thank you very much for over a decade of service to the town. I hope I get to work with you on other committees or projects in the future when you have the time. Thank you very much to Matthew Allison. Moving us forward, coming up on Thursday, October 2nd, we will have the Third Annual Town Government Meet and Greet. That will be from 5:30 to 8:30 PM at Smokestack Roasters, again, on Thursday, October 2nd. If you are part of the volunteer government or the paid government in town, the employees, you should have received an email with a flyer about this, and flyers are also out on Facebook and going around as well. The Town Government Meet and Greet is put together by the Economic Development Committee, and it's a fantastic opportunity. If you are a business owner, or you run a business in Lunenburg, or if you're interested in opening a business in Lunenburg, this is a great way to come on in, and it's a, it's a nice event. It is relaxed. Local restaurants donate food. You sit, you have a case, a little slice of quesadilla, a glass of wine, and you chat. It's a chance to meet with government officials, employees, representatives, outside of, like, it's that thing where you come in, right? You get your application, and the first time you meet someone is either across the desk, or when you're standing at a podium up there, and then there's a select board, a planning board, whoever up here. That formality absolutely has its place, but there's also the opportunity for that not to be the first interaction. Of course, you can always come into the planning office. You can always speak with government officials. This is a chance to do so in a laid-back atmosphere. Chat, someone can say, oh, well, you need, you would want to talk to the building commissioner about that. Let me introduce you to Brian. It's just a chance to make those connections. It makes it a friendly, more welcome experience. Again, Thursday, October 2nd, 5:30 to 8:30 PM, this year is at Smokestack Roasters. Do please RSVP. Those flyers are around. I also want to let the public and the board know that the land use director role will be posted shortly. The delay in that has been, well, effectively, what can you and can't you change? Because employee, town employee roles have rules and everything. It'll be posted, I mean, when I say shortly, I mean, it may have been posted today. If not, it will be shortly. The, the hang-up is mostly just the time to get it out. To my understanding, the job description is changing to move it to exclusively planning and economic development role. With the management component, I think that is being separated out into a stipend position. And that, that scenario lets ritter building kind of be managed by someone who, whoever's best. It doesn't have to be that one hire who's new to the town necessarily. And in addition, it makes that land use, really, our planner role, more competitive. Why aren't we changing the job title? Because that's one of those things that changing the title, you can change the job description, but changing the title, bigger deal. That's where you have to actually, I don't know if it's a vote at town meeting or something, but there's things that have to happen. But it can get posted, and it will be out there, and it will be, for all hopes, set up as a more competitive position to get us the best candidate, because what we really need is a planner and economic development So, good news in forward progress on that front. I do want to let the board know that we will be sometime in the fall, it might be our next meeting. Brian Jengris, the building commissioner, is going to be coming in, and he's going to give us an intro course in OpenGov. OpenGov is the software that all the town employees use. That's the software our applicants use for applying. And not everything's off paper and digital yet, but some processes are. And the goal is so that, like, we got the links today in our emails, so we can see the files there. And then with OpenGov, that also lets you see, once you have the, once we have the training, we can log in. That also lets us just see that all the communication has happened correctly, whatever else we need to see. But that will be, might be as early as our next meeting, and that, I believe CONCOM as well has already moved that way. That's the direction boards are going in town, and that is, part of that is the whole process of making the application process easier, keeping documents all in one place, and that way it's not, well, which version are you looking at? Which version am I looking at? Try to streamline that process. I want to let, again, the board and everyone know MBTA Communities is coming up. The, I mean, we've done the hard part, right? We had the public info sessions. We got the public info back. We discussed it. We settled on the, the quote, paper compliance model, which again, I want, we say paper compliance, it's not only allowed, but it's, it's taking credit for work we already did, and that's super. And so, the consultants will getting, be getting that back to us in the next couple of weeks. And the goal is for us to set, post shortly to have, my goal is for us to have the public hearing at our September 22nd meeting. I don't expect this to be a huge public hearing, because we're being handed wording, the discussion's been had. Now it's handing us wording. We can make sure it's good, but this is wording that's been approved by the state and should be smooth sailing, getting this into town, special town meeting for the fall.
You say approved by the state, so they've gone through HLC's pre-adoption review process?
Yes. Well, okay. Let me rephrase that. That is my understanding. That was the plan. I have not talked to Nels, our consultant contact, who is out of the office at this moment,
Okay.
And said, hey, Nels, have you done this? But that was the plan.
Mm-hmm.
No, it was to go to EO HLC and, or whoever else. I can't, the alphabet soup-
It's EO HLC. They, they've encouraged and offered pre-adoption.
Yeah.
And we're probably a little bit in clover by having delayed this long, because it's only adjacent rurals that are left to comply. So, I think there's 17 in that pool. So, the most they would get is those 17. And when the deadline for 24 was, it was, like, they were, they said 90 days, and it was more like 120, because they were just deluged with.
Yeah. So, my understanding is, we should be all set with that, and then, assuming the town approves at a town meeting, special town meeting, we're golden. I mean, also assuming we approve it. I, I have trouble imagining that we wouldn't, but at this point in my life, I'm ready for anything to happen.
Is the consultant also on the hook for submission of the compliance package?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could go back and, I have the documentation, what they're doing.
And I ask that, because even if town meeting approves it, we're not done until we submit the compliance package, which isn't a lot of heavy lift, but it's a lot of work in compiling the information that they require, the signatures, the documentation, all of that, and getting it to them by the turn of the year. Because that's a really short timeline to turn that around.
I will, give me one second to fix that typo, so I remember what the heck I'm saying? Great. Adam, I'll follow up on that?
Yeah.
I have, I mean, I have all that doc, I'm not going to look for it now. I have the documentation in there, and, because that's a good question, because if not, we need to take care of that. Thank you.
And I'd rather figure that out now than on November 19th.
Uh, yeah. Nope, great. Again, I'm gunning for September 22nd. I want to make sure they can get it to us in, can we post the public hearing without having it?
Yeah.
In hand, okay, great.
You can start the process, but like, once the ad runs, you really should have it in your hand.
Yeah, okay.
Because people are going to come looking for it.
Yeah, no, great. That, I just want to make sure they will get it to us in a timely enough fashion for that. I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact date in front of me, so I will check. If not, we'll move it out one meeting. Because we, again, we have to get, we have to get all that info submitted, really, by the end of the week, if we're going to have that as a September 22nd meeting. But good news, Lunenburg Public Schools open tomorrow. My schedule frees up.
Back to your unpaid internship?
Uh, yeah, a little bit. Couple other, there's just a bunch to update on. The LBA, I, I go to the LBA meetings when I can, because I think it helps us to have representation there, just to chat with them. I've been able to answer some questions. There's a lot of why, why do you require X? And it's really easy to say, well, because the state makes us? And that, it, it takes some of that load off, why is the town doing this? And it's like, well, be, or to say, I know it feels like a burden, but here's the reason why. Or at times to say, yeah, why are we, why are we doing that? Regardless, they asked if, if I could help them understand the developing stormwater utility. Now, hey, Tim?
Yes.
I don't fully understand the upcoming stormwater utility. I understand it in concept.
Sure.
So, the LB, I could, I can send you the meeting date, but they meet like, it's like an 8:30 AM on a weekday meeting, so the time is likely not convenient for you, and I don't want to push you to have to present there.
Let me know. I've got a hybrid schedule, so sometimes I'm available.
Cool. And if that doesn't work, I, I would love to chat with you either way, just so I can get more up to, I know how stormwater utilities generally work broadly.
Sure.
I don't know what y'all in the task force are looking at specifically yet. Awesome. That's, but they, I mean, that's an unknown, and I'd like to help that turn into a more understood value. And finally, just on a light and happy note, the planner's office is getting repainted, just to look fresh and nice, so that when we, because it's a whole lot easier to repaint the office when there isn't someone in it. And again, ritter is ritter. It is the age it is. There are obstacles that have been put in front of trying to get work done there in a costly and timely fashion. That said, anything we can do to make that a more enjoyable workspace for our hired staff is, I would argue, supremely important. But it's getting repainted, so hooray for that. I was in there today, and they were scraping and sanding and, yay. That is it for the notes for the Chair's Report, All right. Now, Jasmine, I just want to check in. I don't think we've had anything that's had to go across your desk, but I want to make sure, in case I'm wrong, and you know about something I don't right now. Is there anything else, or do I have the handle on everything?
No, you certainly have a great handle on everything.
Super. Thank you. Again, Jasmine Farinacci is our interim planner in the meantime, and she is here to help out, and I, because there's always a chance that something's gone by her that I haven't seen yet. Perfect. Well, now, let's move on to our first actual helping the public business directly. We've got an approval not required, an A and R
Good evening. Ryan Proctor with Dillis &amp; Aurora. I'm here tonight representing the owner, Stephen Panos, for the A and R plan that we've submitted for 830 Mass Ave. What we have here is essentially a parcel creation for a future parcel swap. The property 830 Mass Ave currently contains all the land that is enveloped in the red outline on the plan, and we are intending to create a parcel two, which is the blue hatched area for conveyance to one of the southerly property owners within the future. The remaining land, which is identified as Lot 1A, will still conform to the minimum dimensional zoning requirements in the zoning district, which is the residential A, as well as the limited business zone district, and we are not proposing any changes to the property frontage on 830 Mass Ave. 830 Mass Ave does contain a single-family home currently, and we have, or will be filing an application for a sewer connection for that property this week with the sewer commission. And then the remaining portion outlined in blue is currently vacant. So, happy to take any questions.
Um, I'm not, I know I can check this in OpenGov, but I'm not, well, I have to redo my login there, so I'll just ask, you did submit to the, I mean, again, the answer is your, your issue, but you did submit to the planning, not planning, we're planning, to the health department and get whatever response they had?
We did. I think there is a response from them in OpenGov also. I can read that, and it also was snipped into the application package I submitted.
Okay, great. As, as long as you have that info and you're comfy with it, great. Again, for those who are familiar with the A and R process and wonder why I'm asking about Board of Health, when people submit A and R here, we do also have them, uh, submit to the Board of Health. We're not allowed to make our judgment based on what the Board of Health says. The Board of Health can say, you're messing up your septic system, and in the end, that's, or the future options for septic, that's the applicant's problem. We do that because that makes, we want the applicant to know if it's going to be a problem. We've had applicants come in, do an A and R, and then come back and say, whoops, and so, often that's further down the path, once they've already spent money on more plans. So, great. No change in frontage, you said?
Nope.
Okay. And both lots are conforming?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
The, the planning board had approved the A and R for this lot, I think, three or four years ago, and the adjacent lot, so.
Great. Questions from the board?
The house is on sewer, correct?
It will be on sewer.
It will be on sewer. And this throat at the rear of the remaining portion that leads out to this triangular area?
Yes.
What's the width of that? I don't-
I believe it's 25 feet.
Okay. I thought we had a provision in the dimensional regulations that, is it, it might be 25, I thought it was 50, that anything that comes to a vanishing point lower than 50 feet beyond the house doesn't count towards the lot size?
I'm unaware of the, off the top of my head.
And I'm just, I, I want to see if I can find it.
Yeah.
It's, so if anyone else has questions, they can.
Well, now I have one question, but it, it's that one, so.
Okay.
Because I know we have a different minimum width at the house, but.
Apologies.
Where small questions that end up with lots of silence and typing.
So, lot shape, unless approved, approved in conjunction with a subdivision plan under the general laws, Chapter 41, or with a development plan review under this bylaw, lots shall maintain beyond the principal building a lot width as defined in Section B of the definition of lot, Section 252.1, and measured from side lot to side lot line to be a minimum of 50% of the required lot width as defined in subsection B above. Any lot area width less than the minimum described above shall not be calculated in the required area dimension or used for any other purpose. So, this is a limited business residential, correct?
Correct.
So, the required lot width is 100, so the 50% of that would be 50 feet. So, that, it looks to be about 100 to 125 feet of length for that 25 feet. If that were subtracted from your required width, I mean, you also get into trouble with the, the point at the end of the triangle.
Right.
I, it may, what essentially is happening is we may be creating a non-conforming lot. It looks like you're creating a lot of 90,000 square feet, so it's probably not an issue in the grand scheme of things.
Right.
Because there, is there a required lot area?
I believe it's 80.
It's 40,000.
Right. And this is a, a reduced frontage lot also, so I think, so we have the 80,000.
So, it needs to be double that, so it needs to be 80. So, we're, we're kind of teetering on the line of whether or not you meet the requirements?
I can definitely clarify that with a calculation.
Okay. I mean, I, I globally don't have an issue with the division. It makes total sense. There's extra land here. Somebody wants it.
Yep.
These folks don't need it. They're not going to do anything with it. Great. I'm all for, for that land swap. I just need, wanted to be sure that we're not violating the A and R statute.
I understand.
To that end, what is our time, because we have 21 days after submittal, correct?
Correct. The applicant could extend that time by request, or the board could deny it, and they could refile with clarification. I would imagine you'd be willing to extend to our next meeting, which is, what, September 8?
That sounds, I believe that's correct. I could tell you, I got to call up that note sheet. Yes, it is.
Yeah, that, that would be preferable, if the board's amenable to that.
Yeah, I, I don't, again, I don't think there's an issue with this as a, a larger project, just, it's the, the little details that I want to make sure we don't.
All right, great. Do we need to do anything on the motion side for that to happen? Or is this just the applicant saying, I'll come back next time?
It would be the applicant sending written communication, probably the gen that gets stamped at the town clerk's office, so that we have a record that it was sent and accepted and timestamped.
Okay, great.
And I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Super. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Good catch, Adam. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right. And so, presumably, we'll see them at the next meeting, so if they can be on the agenda. Great. I'm going to hop back into my agenda quickly. That, and next up is public hearing for 499 Northfield Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, wait, we have to open the, we have to open this hearing.
Give me one second to pull it up.
Yeah, I, I'm like, wait, this is an actual hearing. We have, that we have, oh, hearing we, isn't continued from like-
Months and, months, months ago.
How novel.
It's thinking about loading.
Don't you love technology?
Love it. My favorite.
If you want to amend, I have it available on my screen.
I was going to say, it might be time to put it in an outside article for new, new planning board tablets.
Hold on, we're right there. There we go. Okay, I got it. It heard your threats. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on August 25th, 2025, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-1, 8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by Priscilla, is it Dischamps?
Dischamps.
Dischamps, okay. For the construction of an 1,800 sift addition, I'm assuming that means square foot addition, to the rear building of the Pat Brody Shelter for Cats. Subject property information, the location is 499 Northfield Road in Lunenburg, Assessors Map 39, parcel number four. Owner is Edward and Priscilla Dischamps at 455 Northfield Road in Lunenburg, Mass. You can view materials online at lunenburgma portal dot open gov dot com slash search via an email request to the planning office, planning@lunenburgma.gov, or in person at the planning office at 960 Mass Avenue in Lunenburg.
Great. Now that we've actually opened the public hearing, take it away.
Perfect. So, good evening. For the record, Justin Leclerc, McCarty Engineering, here tonight on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Dischamps, who are also here in the audience. So, as stated, the project is at 499 Northfield Road. Just to orient the board, if you're looking at the plan, the top of the page is Northfield Road. If you go plan right, where the north arrow is, that would be the intersection of Northfield and Holman Street. So, this is the Pat Brody Shelter for Cats. Since their creation and the start of the business back in the late 80s, 90s, they've been here. They've always been here. Within the past few years, the way that the shelter has been going, they're looking to expand it and get a little bit more room. So, with this, we're proposing the 1,800 square foot addition, and I'm just going to walk over to the plan, just so the board can see.
The 1,800 square foot addition.
I, I am so sorry. You could bring the microphone with you, but they can't hear you at home.
No, that's all right.
Bob Barker.
Yeah, it's very game show.
Thank you. So, as I was saying, the 1,800 square foot addition is the building here. Along with that will be a screened-in porch. On the outside, that's the thinner rectangle, and then the light tan is the existing building at the back of the property. So, we're here tonight for the site plan approval. We did submit- We did submit a zone determination with the building inspector. We were required to go in front of ZBA, which we have, and received the special permit for the shelter slash kennel and the definition of the bylaws. We did go in front of Conservation Commission at their last meeting. We did receive our order of conditions. The only change I want to note on this plan shown here to what the commission wanted was, on the plan right, we do have the septic system shown, and with that, they want us to extend the erosion control around it a little bit more. As part of this project, we do have to expand the existing septic system to meet the Board of Health requirements. We've had preliminary conversation with the board. They're on board, no pun intended, to have us expand the system. So when they're ready to start construction, we'll coordinate with the board and the Board of Health agent on testing and verifying the size of the expansion. The other thing is that this project does not require a stormwater special permit as we're under an acre of disturbance, but to help mitigate some of the stormwater runoff, you can see on the plan, there's a white gray stone around the edge of the proposed addition. That's a stone-lined drip edge that would catch the runoff from the rooftop and infiltrate it into the ground. And that's very typical of the piece on diaphragms that we've been in front of you with for dryways and whatnot. So really, that is the gist of the project. Like I said, we have ZBA approval, CONCON approval, Board of Health's on board. So you guys are really the last piece, and if you guys have any additional questions, more than happy to answer them.
Wonderful. Love the cat shelter. But I, couple quick questions. I, I see it comes right up to the lot line, and I saw something about future A and R.
So not so much a future A and R. So this piece also abuts a project we previously did on Holman. It was a seven A and R lot division that we did with some single-family homes. The Deschamps at the time did buy what was lot number six that had fronted on Northfield Road. Being butters to this, they didn't want a house in their backyard, so they said, we're going to buy the piece. So they do own both the part 499, which we're speaking to, as well as the adjacent former lot six. So with them having the common ownership of it, that internal lot line does disappear. So the zone setback line would be to the dark black outer perimeter line.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
And that was one thing we had to discuss with the building commissioner as well, and he was good with that.
Great.
Do they intend to do an 81X plan or a formal A and R to combine the lots, or are they holding them separate for their own purposes in the future?
So depending on who you talk to, you can do the 81X plan, or you could have your attorney convey, just convey the two deeds together since it's under common ownership. So yes is your answer, one way or the other, it'll end up in one.
It's something that they're ultimately going to do.
Yep.
I generally suggest that both is, and I.
That there's exhibit to go with the.
So sorry, guys, we can't hear anything on Zoom.
Gives an easy and reliable visual of, of what folks own, and it, what it will do is going forward in the future, it, it, it puts.
Guys, on Zoom, we can't hear anything. I'm so sorry. I don't know if the mics are off.
Well, okay, thank you, Jasmine.
It puts on record that the town then captures it for their mapping purposes. You can't mute public access, but you have to have your mic off.
Yep.
Or we get the, the loop.
So, no, no, don't ask, ask, public access shouldn't be muted. We need them off. Oh, we can ask them unmuted, yeah?
And it's not.
Oh.
There it is.
Okay. I believe the issue should be fixed. Jasmine, can you hear us now out in the ether of the internet?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Bat check.
Basically, I was saying, you can do either, I, I always say, both makes the most sense. The deed, that way you have a legal description of the lot, and you've done the survey, I mean, you have it. 81X, it's really just paying the, what is it, $150 now to record a plan, which, you know, can feel like highway robbery, but you get a visual that is recorded on the town's record plans. It's certainly not necessary for this project, but as a property owner, it's something that I would say folks may want to do in the long term.
And it's potential cleaner title.
Correct. It resolves a lot of issues at, at the time of sale, or probate, or whatever happens, hopefully decades in the future.
Yep. But just for the board's clarification, the intent is to have this as one large parcel.
My apologies. Over here, we're just trying to do a, I see that on the screen, we've got a notification that we don't know is coming from this computer or another one, so we're trying to free up the screen quickly.
Do you mind if I carry on with my questions?
Not at all. I just wanted to explain the kibatzing over here.
Nope, that's fine. Can you tell us what the total square footage is, including the screened porch?
So after, excuse me, after the construction, it's about 3,900 square feet. The fire department did respond on opengov, asking that same question.
And I'm, no, I'm talking about the, just the addition portion.
Oh, just.
Does the 1,800 cover the screened porch as well as the building?
No, I believe 1,800 was the build itself.
And then the screened porch is additional?
Yes, screened porch is additional. It is an open screened in porch.
Really, I just want to kind of understand.
Yep.
The, is there an operation and maintenance plan for the proposed stormwater BMP?
So one was not submitted as part of it, not being under the stormwater permit, but.
But I, I think that for a project like this, it's, and it's a, it's a simple BMP, it's a simple maintenance plan. I think having included as part of the decision will just make a cleaner decision. So I would, I would recommend to the board that we require that. Was there any soil testing done in the general area of the building?
On the adjacent?
In conjunction with the design of the BMP?
So not at this time, but I believe you were here when we did the Holman development.
Correct.
So we did extensive testing for both stormwater and.
And you're referring that it's going to be a similar.
It was very consistent throughout the areas, so.
And I just didn't want you to put it in and have it be a tight till underneath and have this basically just be like a moat around a cat shelter. So, and then you have these two heavy black lines that extend to the south.
So those are retaining walls.
Okay.
As part of this, and actually.
That was what I guessed they were, but I didn't see any note about it.
So these elevations were drawn by McKenzie Engineering, just depicting the addition. If you look at the bottom one, you can see assessed stairs going into a basement of the addition. The retaining walls are being proposed to just meet the grades, so that way they can drive in and out, or wheel material in and out, and not have an extensive amount of grading to be done.
What is the height of the retaining walls, soup to nuts?
So you're probably looking five feet, give or take. So you're 540 top, might even be less, because you're 540 top of concrete, and then you have a basement. I don't believe it's a full, full basement, and then you have retaining walls down to 534, 532.
And those are going to be modular blocks?
Yeah, that would be the intent.
And you'll need fall protection along the top of it?
If exceeds.
36.
36 inches, yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's not, it might be one, maybe two courses of block, really, coming out from the basement.
And I mean, none of this is, again, a critical, it just, I want to understand what we're, what we're talking about as we, as we get towards it.
Yep.
Other than that, I, you know, it's clean runoff, the drip edge is really just there to provide extra protection, a little bit of capacity and some infiltration. So that's the majority of my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. I, the questions I had after looking at this had to do with understanding the property line, as well as just making sure, making sure we weren't going to hit any issues with zoning, and you said you've been before ZBA.
Yep.
So, super. Other questions from the board? All right. Adam, in your litany of questions, I don't mean that negatively. Did you get the answers you need, or are we waiting?
I did. I mean, I, I, there's nothing here that I think we can't vote on tonight.
Okay.
Condition the submission of, of the operation and maintenance plan.
Okay. Would that be acceptable to put together our operation and maintenance plan for the?
I think I have one somewhere.
Fantastic. All right. If there are no more questions from the board, we could have a motion to close the public hearing for 499 Northfield Road, and then we deliberate and blah.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Super duper. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I've just said super duper. As a matter of public record, it's there now. Okay. Great. So, I mean, it sounds like we would want to look at all standard conditions, as well as the special condition of submitting a. Help me with that.
Operation and maintenance plan.
Thank you. Operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater drip edge. Do we have anything else?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we could have a motion such as to approve the site plan for 499 Northfield Road with all standard conditions and the special condition of requiring submission of a operations and maintenance plan for the stormwater drip edge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set.
Thank you.
We'll come and visit once we have it done.
I am just down the road, absolutely.
You might not be able to get rid of him.
All right, let me go back to our agenda. That was public, I mean, that's our public hearings for today. Rock and roll. Next up is a very small piece under reorganization. We don't, it's not a big one, but Mr. Allison was our representative to the Municipal Building Design Committee, also called, you'll see that in Building Reuse Committee, they're the same thing. We need to put someone forward, because they are, the, the select board has modified their charge based on.
15 years of chasing their tail?
Yeah, well, especially based on getting so close, yet so far at, in May. And they need our person there so we can rock and roll. I am, I am interested in taking this role myself, but I don't want that to cut out others saying they want it. And I'll be especially clear, the, one of the reasons I'm interested is because I want to make sure that committee has someone good at public speaking and explaining things to the public and laying out the whole idea, because I think that's going to be key in any project moving forward. And I view that as one of my strengths. I'm not heck bent on that role, but I see that as something I can bring to the table. If there's others who are interested, speak up, please.
I nominate Matt Brenner to be the planning board's designated Municipal Building Design Committee.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I called Tim jumping out of his chair, but I wanted to get that nomination.
We have no decisions or anything to go through right now. Board discussions. I'm just going to reverse the order on those quickly, because I feel like it. So signature of paperwork for 430 Mulpus Road. Don't worry about the wording too much, I'm going to lay this out for you very quickly. 430 Mulpus Road is a Harbor Homes property.
Harbor Classic.
Harbor Classic Homes. Thank you. I'm like, I'm missing a word in there. Yeah, no, this is, we just need to fix, this isn't really a discussion, just we don't have a place to put, let's vote on something to fix paperwork issues. When this, I believe it was stormwater, when the surety deposit was put in, it was like during an overlap in change in admin assistance, and I don't remember who, basically, the, whoever filed it used, and this was like a year ago or something, used Marjorie's old paperwork, not the newer paperwork, and so it referenced an account type that doesn't exist anymore at that bank. So we, this is purely clearing up paperwork. I spoke with Mr. Ron Koyvoo, I apologize if I got your last name, if I butchered it. Because he came in and said, what's going on? I said, this is just us, this is something the treasurer, town treasurer, needs us to do specifically to close out the, make a motion to close out the old account and enable her to open the correct account. I can get into more details for us, or I can give you a motion to use. So I am looking for a motion such as for the planning board to close out the current account for 430 Mulpus Road Performance Guarantee, then turn over the funds to the town treasurer to use as the surety deposit to create a new Performance Guarantee account in the correct format.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. And Jen, did you get Marlene's follow-up on that?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
But I'm hoping to get that by tomorrow morning.
Oh, no, she sent an email follow-up with the steps. You may or may, I will double check later and see if you were CC'd on that. If not, I'll forward it to you. Just a slightly different set of steps than I specified in my email today.
Okay.
For office backend stuff. Great. Super. And, oh, no, okay, I see. Yeah, no, I, I didn't realize you had sent another email to my, no. You're up to date and everything. Great, then we don't need to worry more about that. The next item on our agenda is the Master Plan Steering Committee review of current items. I can explain that broadly, or Tim, you're welcome to, because you're our rep.
Sure. What we've got in front of us is the kind of draft of what is going to be going into the master plan. The board has attempted to break it up into sections and send those sections out to what they believe are the appropriate boards for comment. Basically, the document we've got here, we've just got a couple of questions to go through on each of these points. One, is this controlled by our board? Like, do we have any input on this? What currently exists? And what would we need, or what would our involvement be in these ideas or recommendations? Yeah, basically, that should cover, I think, most of what we would need in this.
What's our timeframe on this?
Uh, October, beginning of October they want it back.
Yeah, they need it by Oct., by the end of September, last day.
I would ask that we carry this till the first meeting in September. Having just seen it, I think I'd really like to take a minute to dig through it, and I want to be clear, these are not all the goals, these are the goals they feel specifically are directed to the planning board.
That's correct.
And it would be, is the master document all of the goals, or, like, because there's a, there's a, there's two workbooks here.
Yes.
And one says planning board and one says master.
Yes.
So is the master, all the goals broken down by chapter?
Uh, yes.
I don't think they're broken down by chapter necessarily.
Because that would be really helpful for me.
Sure.
To be able to frame how I review it, knowing what the goal is associated with, because I think really, even, even goals in a housing chapter in a master plan sometimes are, you know, reaching into other places, but understanding what the frame of that goal or that objective is would give me a better, a better angle to review it from and kind of make comment on.
These are not necess, and Tim, you can, I've missed a couple of meetings because I was traveling, so I, correct me and interrupt me. I mean, these are not necessarily the formal goals. What these are, are, so through the rounds of public feedback, there's been a lot of narrowing, where it's get feedback, you know, get open-ended feedback, turn that feedback into a survey to get more closed feedback. Take the results of that survey, ask, pose it with some probing questions to the public to get more open-ended but narrow.
Yeah, you're taking the closed feedback and you're shaving it with open feedback.
Yes. Repeat a few times, and that's kind of distilled down to certain recommend, because you'll see the column that we have is recommendations from public feedback. And then what the Master Plan Steering Committee did is looked at it and said, with over/under, okay, these, this, these pieces of feedback saying the public wants this really apply to the Council on Aging, these apply to Planning Board, these, but there's overlaps, so it could be that make downtown more walkable could apply to Planning Board and architectural preservation, and, so it's getting feedback from the, whatever groups, that's kind of within their domain, and that's why it's set, it's a little weird the setup is a spreadsheet, but that's because some things only go one place, some go...
Yeah, I mean, the spreadsheet doesn't necessarily bother me, I guess. I, I expect a final master plan has the elements required by the general laws. And each of those elements outlines the current state of those, the projected state of those, the desired state of those, and then a series of goals and objectives to achieve that desired state. And that is repeated through ea, each of the eight chapters, and then that's all coalesced into a goals and objectives chapter that has an action matrix after it. And so, like, supportive range of housing options for all ages and income, that's very clearly a housing goal. But something like make downtown more walkable could be an economic development goal, it could be a housing goal, it's most likely a circulation and transportation goal, because that's the, that's the sort of pot that it fits in, in a, in a, like a, a technical face value kind of thing, and it has those ancillary benefits. And I guess it, it might not matter what chapter they're supposed to go in, but I really do want to take some time to kind of digest it and, and, you know, put my, my thoughts down in a, in a more directed way.
Full agreement on more time, that's why it's in front of us. Can, do you want, do you want Tim and I to follow up, and if, oh, I mean...
No, let me, let me look at, I'll look at it how it was presented, and if I have questions or something, I can either reach out to Tim, or I can reach out to Kim Duffy directly.
Yep.
And, you know, I can just, I know I'm shy, but I'll say my piece at the September meeting.
There we go, and we have two meetings to review this, so we'll put it on our...
Yeah.
So, again, if we can move this to our next meeting's discussion agenda as well. And, perfect. Great, does anyone have anything they want to talk about on it now, or now that we've discussed it, you can just go back and digest? I don't want, if someone's like, "Oh, but I have feedback I really want to share", I don't want to cut that short. All right. I'm fine with that, sounds great. Okay, those are our two board discussion topics. Hey Jen, anything big happening in neighboring communities that we need to know about? Okay. Great. I think at a previous meeting, things bleed together a little. Adam, I know at one point you had a question about why is this now, here now, I think I, did I answer that at a previous?
Yeah. Well, I think it was, you weren't at the meeting I asked, and it was answered, it makes sense. I just, I, I thought we were discussing all of them, and I was like, that seems like a lot.
Fair, okay, great, wonderful. Summer's confusing. Okay, committee reports, Master Plan Steering Committee.
There's not really much to add in based upon, you know, beyond what we just talked about. We are in the refining process to try and get everything ready for town meeting if we can.
Super. And my, the goal is, we are not planning, the goal is to have, present the progress at town meeting, not to have, yes, okay, great, that's what, that's where I remembered our conversation being, but I wanted to make sure I was right, and I wanted to make sure that the public is well-understood, we're not giving them a master plan at town meeting. We're getting delightfully close, but, okay, Open Space Committee.
Nothing particularly new to contribute. We had a...
I'm so sorry.
...property that was previously not recommended and we passed over coming out of chapter, that due to some documenting problems came back up, we came to the same conclusion, we're not looking to pick up the property. I don't remember the exact address, it was on West Townsend Road. But yeah, that's, that's about it.
Yeah. Oh, did your committee discuss that again, because it...
It did, it did come back up again.
Oh, I knew it came, I apologize, so, I apologize to the board then, because it loo, when I read through their response, it looked like it was just, yeah, we had already said no.
Yeah.
So I, it looked like the two committees that responded said, "We already said no",
Sure.
And so I didn't think to put it back on the agenda for us to discuss again.
Oh, okay. Well, the committee recommended not picking up the parcel.
Okay. If there is time for us to discuss it, I will get it on our next agenda to look at quickly, but, yeah. All right. Municipal Building Design Committee, well, I've kind of given the update on that, they're going to be up and running again. Capital Planning Committee, Capital Planning Committee is just beginning to do its Frankensteinian reviving, back from the dead, as it does every year. There is nothing to report, because we're now in the time to get meetings going phase. Yeah, that's really all to report there. Economic Development Committee, did not meet for most of the summer, but did have a meeting last week. I worked with the Economic Development Committee to, as Kathy Clark has stepped back as chair, to basically help move that committee forward and be like, "I can't call a meeting, but I can do all the legwork so you all can call the meeting", and they had their meeting. Josie Gilchrist is the new chair of that committee. I'm looking forward to the output of it going forward. A couple of things I put forward to them is some of what I anticipate happening going forward, and things I would like to put on our agenda going forward, is, so first of all, there's going to be the town meeting, great, they handle that. I would like us, once we have a planner, I don't want us doing it till we have a planner and economic development person, because I think they're key, but I would like us to revisit the EDC's charter and look at if that is the makeup and charge we want them to have. It has taken a very small business, and I would, I would argue micro-business bent over the years, and there's nothing wrong with that, they're, they're part of the economic drivers. We say small business, we're often thinking micro businesses, but small businesses go up to like fifty employees or something, the bigger. And I'm of the opinion that I think we're, we as a board, in conjunction with whoever's going to be helping us understand and organize economic development going forward, that we'll want to kind of zone in the focus of that committee and the build to make sure it can support those needs, so going forward, we can try to have that better bond with the business community and really try to, I've said in other formats, other venues, we're at the point right now that there's a lot of funding that we have taken for granted, that it turns out we were taking for granted, because you could count on certain funding every year from the federal government for decades, and it, there are no guarantees now. I am, I'm, my one man's opinion is, I would like us to see what we can do to shore up our own economic house, so that though we're less impacted, knowing that economic development is a twenty-year thing. You're not, "Oh, well, get more development, then we're all set".
I would also just throw the caution flag up on the combined role of planner and economic development, because you're combining glad handing and regulation.
Yes.
And economic development folks, as helpful and useful as they can be, their job is to tell people, "We can figure that out", and often planners' jobs is regulatory. Here's the rules, you need to follow these rules. So if you're one, on one day telling them to figure it out, and then you'll help them figure it out, and they come to see you and you're like, "Oh, but here's all the rules you have to follow", it can get messy. So I think that as we look at this and as we talk with whomever is hired, I think there's a role for the Economic Development Committee in some of that more public-facing or more participatory in helping businesses get creative and navigate this, but it needs to be done in a way that recognizes their volunteers. And I think it's something we should be thinking about as, as we move that way.
No, and you, you have experience both in the planner and semi-economic development role here in town, and with that committee from that role. So, no, I can tell you that that under, the understanding of the dual nature is, it's not lost on me, and it isn't lost on Jennifer Warren Diamond either, as our town manager, and that's been part of the, that ongoing discussion of, okay, so we're going to have someone that will simultaneously be saying, "Well, here's what works for regu, here's what we may want to have for regs in town", and something we'll need to know as a board, is another part of their job, is kind of to say, "Here's how you work around some of the regs in town", and it's awkward, but it's doable.
It just takes us, it takes someone with a certain mentality that they can make recommendations that are, that aid or allow someone to work through the process and surmount some of their potential issues while also allowing that the regulation spirit and intent is met in, in that process.
I agree with that. I think, I think that's a good point, that that, it also becomes something the Economic Development Committee can help with in the long run.
Especially as far as policy setting and direction of, like, an economic development program can go.
Now, what I did tell the EDC was that one thing I'm going, once, again, once we have a planner, I'm going to want the, I would like the, I would like to, us, before we go messing with the EDC's charter, it's ultimately our call, but I would like us to find out from the EDC what they think their, what their vision for that committee is. And once we have, they can come up with that, again, with a planner, and I'll be there too as our ex officio member, once all that's together, then it comes to us, and that gives us more stuff to chew on. We may agree with their vision, we may not, but it gives us input of where they are now, where they think they want to be. I think it's good for the committee to think about who they want to be as well. A little bit of mission setting is usually not a bad thing in life. Stormwater Task Force.
We've run into some technical difficulties with some of the information we've been given, we're just working on reviewing that. We're not sure anymore that we're going to have a presentation for town meeting, we're just kind of playing this out as we get the information we need.
Better to do it right.
Yep.
Amen. Monticic Regional Planning Commission.
We met earlier this month, I didn't have any notes really to share, it was a fairly quick meeting, so it was mostly budgetary updates on projects that were happening, so nothing specific really.
Monticic Joint Transportation Committee.
We did meet, I was unable to attend that meeting, so no notes.
That reminds me, Amanda, I want to kibbutz, kibitz with you for like five minutes on an org that's reached out to me, reaching out is a strong term, that has included me as one of their seemingly members randomly, as because I'm chair of the planning board about transportation, I'll chat with you.
Okay.
It's just, I'm trying to figure out if this is something you know anything about.
Okay.
No big deal. Great, Minutes Approval. Because that is committee reports, there are minutes for the meeting from 7:14.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was fast. Moved and seconded.
Very short minutes.
Yeah.
I had a question, though.
Oh!
Is that okay? I'm sorry. Okay, I just had a question on the out-of-order comments that were in it. I'm not sure what that's referring to, so like under Chair Director's Report, it says "out of order", under Decisions, it says "out of order", I was just wondering what that's referring to.
It just meant that the way that they were addressed were out of order.
Got it, okay, out of order for the agenda.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
I didn't, hadn't noticed that before, but now I'm good, thank you.
All right, got it, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain. Perfect. We're moving faster, then I can switch screens. Meeting schedule, the planning board meets at 6:00 PM at Town Hall unless otherwise stated. Upcoming meetings include Monday, September 9th, Monday, September 22nd, and Monday, October 27th. Do we not meet the first?
It's Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Good to know.
And it's the 8th, not the 9th.
Hush for being right, that, that...
I don't want anyone to show up here on, on Tuesday the 9th wondering who we are.
That would be awful, thank you. Monday, September 8th, Monday, September 22nd. That would be awful. Thank you. Monday, September eighth, Monday, September twenty-second, Monday, October twenty-seventh. I do not anticipate we will need that October meeting. I can envision a world where MBTA communities means I'm wrong, and we might need that early October meeting for a public hearing. I think we'll be fine either way, because we, there's no reason, having the public hearing on the twenty-seventh should be fine for the town, yeah, for meeting town warrant and everything.
I mean, it, it should go on the warrant ahead of time.
Yes.
We, it has to go on the warrant, and then if there's changes, we can either do it on the floor, or if it's changed in time, we can change the language in the warrant before printing.
I believe that is the, I believe that is all how it should go, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I am aware that still not having a full-time dedicated planner to the town, um, that a- as we saw with the brief meeting we had to hold last week for minutes' approval, um, thank you, Tim, thank you, Amanda, for being able to join, to join that. You weren't needed.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't see that until the.
No, it's fine, don't worry about it. Not, um, I could have reached out to you, I could have given you a call, but it wasn't, it wasn't something you were even there for, so. Um, but we have those little snafus from time to time that we're still, hopefully.
Yeah, but we're not dealing with like the, the, everything needs to be in by January first, and then the warrant doesn't get printed for three months, and you can't change anything after you, like.
Yeah.
I, I just think it, it would be good to put together the warrant article for submission so that it's there and there's a placeholder and we don't miss a deadline.
Agreed. Um, and I'm making sure that we're, I'm in the office making sure we're on top of those things, chatting with Brian, chatting with Jen, making sure we're there. Um, public comment. No public in the room? No public online? All right, board comment concerns.
Uh, just a point of information for applicants, folks watching, for you, Jen, there have been a series of communities who have had people receive invoices, uh, on town letterhead for fees due for projects, uh, multiple thousands of dollars that were done fraudulently, so there's either an AI or a scammer collective that is scrubbing agendas and sending folks invoices on town letterhead. Uh, so folks should be aware out there, um, and i- if you have a question, if you get a wild invoice, please reach out to the planning office.
I can give some more specific instructions on that, actually. I apologize because I, that didn't make it, that didn't make it to this note set for tonight, and that was supposed to be what I opened with. Um, because, no, you're right, that is an issue that they're seem to be combing the public, the newspaper articles and public databases and seeing who has applications. Okay. Couple things the town is doing to protect you. New applications going forward are going to get a note letting them know that this is happening in OpenGov. They go into OpenGov, they're going to get a page that says, hey, FYI, and it's going to give them a few steps, and they're the steps I'm going to talk about now. That they're, these are the standard anti-scammer steps. If you get a bill from the planning department or for the town for your application that doesn't make sense to you, call us. What you're not going to do is you're not going to use the phone number on that bill, because, boy, howdy, will they be happy to tell you that you owe money regardless. You're going to use, you're going to look it up, you know, use your internet, use your phone book if you still have one, uh, call the Ritter Building, call the planning office, you'll get, uh, you'll get Gendagel, and she will be able to confirm if you actually owe anything. Don't use the number on any, on a bill you get, just look it up separately, give a call. Um, any question you have, call the office. Um, that's really the biggie. We're getting that note out in front of people. Don't hesitate to reach out or come in in person to double-check, and, by the way, Jen, you may get people calling about that. That's why. Um, thank you, Adam. I would have been awful to not get that out there in the world. Um, any other board comment concerns? Okay, in that case, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven sixteen PM. Thank you very much, everyone out there in TV land. I hope you have a great evening, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.